Okay. All right. You might have all the meeting orders. Robert?
Mayor Barron.
Here.
Councilman Burris.
Here.
Councilman Welch.
Here.
Councilman, uh, council, sorry, Alderwoman, sorry. Uh, Jones.
Here.
Alderwo- Alderman Green. Alderman Green. Mayor Brooks and Madre.
Here.
Young woman.
Thank you. Gil, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, today we don't have any special presentations. And Robert, would you like to take us through the public hearing?
Sure.
And actual items from that hearing?
A public hearing was held prior to this meeting. Uh, there were no, we had two cases come before it, two applications come before it. Both of them were replats. We had nobody speak against it or for it during, during the time. Uh, first one on, on the order is, uh, Mr. Peter Van Morrison. Uh, he is lots eight and nine of section nineteen of the Galveston County, uh, Holland, Holland Jones survey. And it's recorded, as, as reported into the Galveston County official public records of real property of Galveston County, Texas. Also known as one six five four four Anger Way. All the, all of the, uh, all the statutory requirements have been met. And it was a unanimous vote by the Plenary and Zoning Commission to approve.
All right. Do we have a motion to vote? I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
You're next.
Next on the agenda would be Matthew Borsey's application. It is, I just did. Okay. Section, uh, abstract one twenty-one of the Holland, uh, Holland Jones survey, lots fifteen and sixteen of Jamaica Beach, section twenty-five of the Galveston County, Texas, according to the official public records of real property of Galveston County. It is located at forty-four hundred Bob Smith. All the statutory requirements have been met. The, um, Plenary and Zoning Commission approved it unanimously.
Do we have a motion to vote?
Make a motion that we vote.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Unanimously approved. All right, do we have any public comments?
Well, can I, can I give an announcement to the two parties?
Yes.
By next week, I'll need you all to come in here. We have to sign papers. You take it to the courthouse, okay? You can call me up when we set up a appointment.
Okay, uh, Ms. Wint?
Are you over to me?
Yes, all the comments.
I'm gonna address what I tried to address last time. And you never got a chance to.
I forgot to say yes.
You know, like I said, if you're gonna run on a campaign to audit the city, I feel like you need to follow through with it. You, Ms. Jones, was a big part of your campaign. And I know your supporters won't, and, uh, otherwise they wouldn't have yelled and screamed and claimed Morris didn't have been made to excuse them having done an audit. So what I'm looking at, Mr. Gale Alderman said that you're looking to hire an outside firm to come in, audit the city. And what I'm looking at is, when are you gonna do that? Who's gonna do that? How much is it gonna cost? And will that be made public? And how long will it take? All this needs to be done because you ran on that, and I feel like you need to follow through.
Thank you. Uh, yes, so we have contracted with Catherine Maxwell. And, uh, she's the auditor that has done our audits historically. So she did the eighteen nineteen audit, uh, which is available out on the website. And then, uh, we're due the nineteen, that, when I say nineteen, it's the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit. And our target is to dig through all of the old boxes from nineteen and twenty. Uh, Jessica's been making great headway on it. But it is digging some very old information up. So, uh, we have committed to have the information to them. This audit is gonna be a little pricier probably than the, than the following audits. Because, uh, the time constraint we're under to get all the ledgers completely up to date to make auditing easy is gonna be challenging. But she has committed to having that audit complete by September fifteenth. Um, the cost is an estimate at this point, but probably thirty thousand for that audit. Then, uh, we have a commitment to have the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two information to her by early December. Uh, she can't fit us in before then because she has other commitments. And, uh, she's committed to have that one finished by end of March. Then the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three audit, which we will have due by March of next year, but we're not gonna make that target either. Uh, because we can't do, it's not like I can go do twenty twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, I have to have the other ones done. Uh, she's committed to have that by June first. So we'll be about three months behind on getting that one complete. And then by the time we roll into twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, we'll be up to date.
Okay. Do we have a resignation from the state that we have to have done by a certain time? Or would we be fined if it's not done by a certain time?
I asked that of Ms. Maxwell, if I needed to, you know, pray, do a beg for forgiveness from someone. And, uh, and sort of confess. And she said no. Uh, she said there's, it's basically what can happen though is if our audits are not up to date. We can be denied grant money. We can be denied FEMA funds in the event of a catastrophe. So there's a lot of things that we can't progress until we can produce our audits to show our financial stability and our financial basis. So, uh, so there's no penalties, I did check.
I just wanted to make sure we follow through on that.
Yes, we're, we're on track. And, um, staff is really jumping through hoops. And if you wanna come dig through boxes with us, I'd appreciate it.
I'm sure you have plenty of supporters and volunteers that would do that for you.
Okay, do we have any other public comments? Okay. Next thing on the agenda is our announcements. A reminder that JBIC has a meeting this Saturday, June twenty-fourth, nine a.m., you know, right here in our, in our esteemed hall. And then also, uh, JBIC's annual meeting is next Saturday, July fifteenth. Volunteer Fire Department, July first. Uh, great big annual fundraising, great event, spread the word. Uh, from Kyle Baden, I understand the band is starting at six. Um, I would assume food might be ready a little bit before then. I know the fire department will be out there all day setting up and getting ready. Um, we have a new event this Saturday at the pool. It's burgers at the pool. So it's a ten dollar charge, and that includes your pool admission. You don't get a discount for being a householder. But, uh, anyway, hopefully we'll get a few people out to the pool who don't normally try it. All right. Next is consent, consent agenda and approval of minutes. Um, we are going to postpone approval of the minutes from the council meeting on four seventeen. Uh, some errors were brought to my attention. Uh, and I didn't have, you know, because of the posting requirements. So we will incorporate those, uh, those changes and have those ready for presenting at the next council meeting. Um, but, are there any questions or discussion, or should, the regulars, from the, sorry, the June eighth meeting? Or do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve the June eighteen, uh, minutes, council meeting minutes.
Second.
Uh, do I have a vote, all in favor?
I'm gonna abstain to this.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have comments, reports for members of council. Alderwoman Jones, do you have any?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Um, last Saturday, um, I attended the joint city of Jamaica Beach, and we can call it Hurricane Planning Meeting. Um, I go to this meeting every year, and I always learn something new. I took video of the meeting and put it on YouTube so anyone can view the hour and a half meeting. I gave the link to the WikiPo Chairman John Moan. And, uh, as I always do, and, um, I gave it to our state rep Terry Leo Wilton. I, and I always, I had an opportunity to talk to Leo, Mayor Terry Leo Wilton and Maze Middleton, and several of the other people who were there. They, and they want you to know that, um, they, they want you to know that they care about you and Jamaica Beach. Thank you, Mayor Barron.
Alderman Madrid?
I don't have a report.
Alderman?
No report at this time?
Alderman Madrid is?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, on to new business then. We had tabled it last time, and, um, as y'all all know, the Bayside wastewater lift station, um, went down. It, it's been having problems for a long time. Went down on Easter weekend. And, uh, been working on the engineered solution to get that fixed correctly. There's a temporary pumping generator out there right now. So, um, do I have a motion to discuss?
I make the motion to discuss.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any other? Robert, do you have anything to?
Other than, we were going to meet with branch construction to go over the, the specs of it. And I've done it at least, so I'll, I'll let you.
Yep. Um, basically, we met with Mercer Engineering and Branch Construction. And because of some of the space constraints, uh, on where it's located, close to the road, uh, some of the opportunities for cost reduction really weren't available to us. And then when we looked at all the, the, the varying options, um, leaving it as designed does provide the, the optimum solution. So Branch's proposal, uh, was much less than the, than the other proposal, um, as well as they can get started immediately. So the, the timeline upon approval, it generally takes about two weeks for them to get their bond and move forward with all the necessary, uh, contractual requirements they have. Um, and they can start ordering some material before that happens. And then it should be about a eight-week schedule, uh, depending upon pump delivery. So, any other comments, discussion? No?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Um, this is dated May fifteenth.
Yes.
And it says proposal is valid for fifteen days from date of issuance?
Yes.
Not gonna be an issue?
No, uh, when I asked Branch about that, um, on, uh, our meeting, he went immediately and confirmed with all his vendors that his pricing is still valid.
Okay. This price is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. We only budgeted a hundred and fifteen thousand. So, a couple of questions on that. Can we approve something that we don't have budgeted? And follow up on that, where is the other ten thousand plus coming from?
So, uh, when I checked on this, we can approve it because it's of an emergency nature. We have emergency equipment there on site. And, uh, and, and as a result, we can exceed the budgeted amount. As far as where the money comes from, um, after I've been reviewing our budget a lot lately, there, there have been excess funds collected previously on the sewer side from sewer revenues. And so there is additional funding in our reserve accounts. And at, I don't know, it'll be the next meeting or the meeting after that, we are gonna have to go forward for an amended budget. We have exceeded our budget on, uh, numerous expenditures from our municipal budget. So, uh, we're gonna have to go for an overall council-approved amended budget. Uh, really, you know, basically just to keep operating, uh, because we have exceeded it.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
So this, this bid from Branch, that is, is that a fixed price or is it not contingency?
Not contingency?
Um, it is a, it, it's a fixed price with two contingencies in there. Number one is, you look at the terms of the contract, it states that well point and pump systems could be an additional charge. If they get to the bottom of the sump and they find that the equipment required to excavate, to, to drain it, to dry it, before they can put a liner in, uh, there will be an extra cost for that. But in the contract, it states that, that any of those costs have to be approved, um, before moving. And the other thing that it doesn't cover is any additional items we want to defend in. So right now, they're planning on going back with fence as is. But, um, there's probably a plan to put an extra walk gate in, and that could be a minor extra charge. Um, that's also hence why it, the contract is amount for one twenty-five, the approval is for one thirty-five, to give a little bit of extra leeway on if, if the gate needs to be changed.
Will that cover the well pointing if that comes up, or are we gonna have to come back?
No, the well point should only be, when I talked to him about it, he said it's just an, an extra level of equipment and should only add, you know, a couple hundred dollars. So, he just wasn't willing to put it in the bid until he had to spend it.
So that's a contingency item from their?
Yes, the well point.
From their pricing?
Yes.
Their pricing is one fifteen plus contingencies to one five, right?
No, their pricing is one twenty-five.
One twenty-five, and we're allowing contingencies to one thirty, correct?
Correct. On, based on, based on their bid, which had two contingency items listed in it. Any other discussion questions?
Do I have a motion to vote?
Motion to approve hiring back branch construction to rebuild and repair Bayside wastewater with number seven in the amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
I second that.
All in favor? All right, thank you. Um, okay. I'm doing something a little different this time. You just need to push back over there, Gil needs to get cozy. We're gonna try this.
Gil and I are already cozy. Good to have a partner close enough to seat.
We talked about your cataracts, right?
Yeah.
And then I'll see if I can actually get it to work and go. I might still need you to, uh, oh, it worked. Okay. But actually, before I, before I go to that, because that's last on the list, first of all, I wanted everybody to have the opportunity to meet our new water clerk, Ms. Tina Secuentes. So, uh, she's an awesome lady. She brings her smiles, and you'll enjoy talking to her on the phone. She has patience unfounded. Might, we might wear her out in, on her first two weeks, she has that patience. Uh, also, once again, I'd like to thank our staff. They've really been just going above and beyond. Um, getting, looking at new ways to do things, looking at improved ways to do things. Jennifer Morse, our court clerk, is clearing up a pretty unprecedented backlog of, of tickets that have been sitting in piles. So hopefully, pretty soon, I'll be able to give y'all the number of just, just how much funds she's collected for the city. Uh, and Garabay's officers, of course, are keeping her busy with new tickets. Um, keeping us safe with the crazies on three double oh five. And the other thing I wanted to bring forth is that Pam Jocelyn has been helping up here a lot. Um, she's been helping with the website and, and also helping with some STRs. Um, I'm, at the next meeting, I'd like to propose a resolution that we allow citizens to volunteer. But we kinda have a bit of a structure and process whereby we can kinda keep track and people can see, you know, what they are doing and working on. So, um, I'm gonna bring that resolution forward at the next meeting so that we can talk about how we can recognize, and, but also make sure that, that we have some controls and, and some input on what they're working on. Um, we talked about, I was, uh, I already gave a review of the audit status. That was on my list. And then I also wanted to give you guys an update for our short-term rentals. Uh, historically, we had host compliance. Council last year voted not to renew that contract. So we didn't renew it. But in that gap, we didn't really progress getting our registrations up to speed. And some of that has fallen behind. So we've been looking at, at how to rectify that situation. Tina's been working on it a lot. And actually going back, working with host and re, resurrecting some of that historic information so we have a starting point. But another, another ordinance that we're gonna be bringing forward is a relook at our STR. Um, as, as Alderwoman Jones has been working, uh, with some, some volunteer personnel and meeting with Galveston Park Board, they found that with STRs, if they list on Airbnb and VRBO, we can, in our ordinance, allow them to directly pay their hot tax to us. Currently, they pay it either to the managing company or the individual. And then either the managing company or the individual pays their hot tax to us. It's very hard to monitor that. It's a lot of tracking on our part. And with this sort of new ability for them to send directly to us, they also have the ability to delist a homeowner from their site if they don't have a valid registration number. So our portion of that will be to upload on a monthly basis any new registrations we have. And then if Airbnb sees a listing that doesn't have the registration, they'll kick them off the site. Um, as well as notify us that there was an unregistered STR on Airbnb and VRBO. So it, it helps us self-regulate without having to have the added expense and manpower to do that ourselves. But that does require an ordinance to change. So we should have that ordinance ready to move forward, uh, maybe end of July. You know, with the target that it would all be in place and we can kind of kick off a new, new era of managing our STRs with the new fiscal year on October first. Okay, next, I have, uh, been talking about doing a bit, can you, can the audience see this okay? I was just wanting to give you guys a quick utility bill update. Um, lots of conversations around the fact that we don't really stay whole on our utility bills. So, um, first of all, Galveston charges us, and this was just simple math. It was just looking at how much we pay and how much water we get for that payment every month. Um, it comes to right at points, roughly point six cents a gallon. Uh, when you look at our projected annual cost of delivering this water to your home, that gives us an annual cost of about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars to purchase the water from Galveston. We have about four hundred thousand for operating our water system. You know, this includes City Hall. Uh, it includes the software to manage the billing. Uh, and of course, we share a portion of our general overhead cost, you know, back to all of our municipal services. It includes the contract operator, which is currently Branch, to manage those day-to-day activities. Um, there is some money in there for what I would call minor water pipe repairs and meter repairs. It doesn't, does not cover sort of the massive break history we currently have. Um, and of course, there are some various fees and permits in order for us to be compliant with TCEQ. Uh, the contract operator covers the day-to-day cost of the necessary testing for our water system. So, uh, to keep us compliant with TCEQ. Uh, looking at a distribution of cost per water meter, when you look at that total, uh, comes to eight hundred and thirty thousand, about annual cost. Um, and, yeah, that's, that's the summary of the water cost plus our operating and maintenance cost. When we look at our revenue, uh, it's projected this year to be six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So when you look at your water bill, the part that says for water, this is what we're projecting getting. It could go up a little bit because we've looked at what we've spent to date. But, uh, as Alderman Welch just pointed out, to me, he's watering like crazy. So our, our, but of course, our usage and fee to Galveston will go up at the same time. Uh, we have one thousand three hundred and twenty water meters that we currently collect bills on. And, uh, that gives us a short fill, a shortfall per month, per meter of thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents. So, uh, that's, that's kind of where we're at on our water bill. Uh, so first off, if you look at your water rates, we pay five, uh, five dollars for every thousand gallons currently. As you can see from my summary, Galveston is charging us almost six dollars per thousand gallons. So, so right there, uh, we're already, you know, subsidizing some homeowners with, with higher water bills. So the first thing would be to charge, at least have a direct pass-through cost uh, on our higher water usage. So taking that to six dollars per thousand. And then, um, the other thing we don't have a good system to do is like, what are our water losses? So when we look at how much we pay to Galveston every month, I mean, there's a certain amount you have to do, you have to flush your lines, you have to flush your water hydrants. But how much are we really losing from our leaks? And how do we predict those to improve as we keep making headway on our water systems? So, um, we, with Tina here, working like crazy on our water systems, and Esther in her magic on Excel, you know, I think we can come up with some better ways to actually see how much water our residents are using versus how much we're paying to Galveston. So we can hopefully come up with a better prediction of what we're gonna, uh, lose in water every month. So we can start tracking our losses per month and see which direction that's going. Then, uh, we also need to, uh, review our meter flow rates. So right now, I have no idea who pays more than the minimum to find out how much extra revenue this going up to six dollars per thousand gallons would generate. Um, and once we do all that, then we can determine what our realistic shortfall will be and, and propose an adjusted rate to, to keep us, to keep us in the, in the, uh, black. Um, so looking at our wastewater operations, we currently, uh, project about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for operating our wastewater treatment plant sewer lines and lift stations. And of course, this kind of includes the same thing as the wastewater. A portion of our contract operations, repairs, and, uh, compliance with TCEQ. It's a little more intense, the compliance requirements of the wastewater plant than our, than our water systems. And, uh, our annual sewer revenue right now is five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So there, there is an excess in what we collect off of our sewer rate. But I will also tell you that we have not been maintaining our sewer plant. So as we look at what that sewer rate needs to be, we really need to determine a true amount to do the right form of predictive and preventive maintenance. amount to do the right form of predictive and preventive maintenance, and most major utilities have a, they have a maintenance schedule, and that maintenance schedule will include what things you do on a preventative basis, basis to keep everything running, but you also have schedule changes. So, what do we keep on our shelves as backup? And what inventory of parts and supplies do we have? And then, when is the right time to replace something? Because you don't want it to fail. If it fails, we can run into some, some pretty negative situations. Also, we have half the plant down, so we've got to look rolling up with our water line replacement strategy, we have to look at a system to get the other half of our plant up and running. So, and we are investigating those and looking into them. You know, one option is to try to clean it up, I'm afraid if we actually try to sandblast the rusty parts that are there, we'll end up with nothing left, but that assessment is still ongoing. So, when I say propose adjusted rate for the sewer revenue, that's gonna be once we can plot out what those costs need to be over time better. Garbage is just a pass-through charge, so basically, right now, you're charged twelve nineteen per residential customer for your garbage. We have one thousand two hundred and seventy-four customers, which brings in that projected amount of revenue. We have to do a little digging and find out why our projected revenue is less than our customer number time current charge. Esther, that's gonna be on our radar screen. And our projected expense is a hundred and eighty-six. Plus, as you know, this week, Robert and I are gonna be negotiating a new solid waste contract with Amerowaste, so that cost will be passed on, once we know what it is. And that's about all I can say about the garbage pass-through charges. We don't make money on it, we just try to pass along exactly what we're charged. Anyway, and I know it's not exactly for the call, but I am open to take questions if anybody has any questions about it. No? Alright. Well, that's all I have. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Do you need everybody to vote? Take the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to adjourn? I'm always anxious to just... Thank you.